Yes, roll call.
At this time, I'd like to call the Board of Commissions' Environmental Public Works Committee Order to Order. May I have a roll call please?
Commissioner Samasco.
Present.
Commissioner Baldwin. Commissioner Beeden.
Present.
Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Vandenbosch.
Here.
Commissioner Torello.
Present. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions, deletions, and changes to the agenda this evening?
I would make the motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Citizens wishing to be heard, I have one this evening, Helen Hermes. Topic is book. It's a book.
Is this on now? Okay, you can hear me. I don't know how many of you heard about Blood Money, written by Peter Schweitzer. He has written several books about government. And this tells you all about the corrupt politicians that are selling out our country. And there's one word I use for these kind of people: bastard. It means a person that is unpleasant and despicable. And that's what every one of them are. It's a great book. I just started reading. And get his other books if you can. That's basically all I have to say. This tells you about this secret Chinese military disintegration warfare, manifesto intent, unripping America apart, and they're succeeding on doing it. They have TikTok that's taking control of our younger people. They are teaching the military ways that, I think his name is, anyways, Tsu, T-S-A, TSU or something like that, Sun. He was an old Chinese warrior centuries ago. And they're using his methods to win and train their military. So get this book. It's really got a lot of information in it. And you'll be shocked at what is happening to our country if you aren't already. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any updates this evening? No? Conceptual initiatives? None, thank you. No old business, moving on to new business. Item 7A, Resolution 2403, placing the proposal millage for road improvement on the ballot.
Make the motion.
Support.
Any discussion?
Yeah, do we have anybody here from the Road Commission, or maybe you can explain it? This is the millage where the federal matches? The road millage, isn't this the one where the federal matches the dollars? Actually, they give 80%.
This is just a renewal of their existing millage.
Correct.
They use for improvements.
Correct. But doesn't this millage, that's the one that has the federal sends us 80% of that. That's why this millage generates, oh, two and a half million dollars, but the majority of the money comes from the federal.
The intent was always to be able to make the federal match. We were never made, be able to make the federal match previously, so.
And they're able to do that on the roads that attach the interstate, they're specific roads, from my memory, that, like, they replaced a bridge on Riley Center Road. Across Township $8,000, the bridge was $800,000 in the feds, because we are a donor state. I support this because we're getting some of our money back from Washington.
A question on that. I mean, my understanding is Road Commission handles, quote, primary roads, Townships handle secondary roads. Is that correct? And if this relates to generating money for both, that's my understanding.
This relates to generating money for the Road Commission. They could use it to meet their match. There isn't a specific requirement that the millage funds have to be used for the match. It just has to be used for maintaining Road Commission roads.
These are not state trunk highways, though. I believe it's for basically primary, secondary roads. It is the responsibility of Road Commission or the Townships. I guess that's where I come from.
Yeah, these would be roads that are the responsibility of the Road Commission.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one comment. There's a lot of millages that are going to come before us this evening to be, have consideration to be placed on the ballot. I've always been a big proponent of let the people vote on it. It's, I've been, seen numerous things here in 20 years. And to be quite honest, some of them I have not supported, you know, at the voting box. But at least, given the, you know, individuals of 50,000 people that are registered voters, the opportunity to say yea or nay on it. So it's just kind of my little two cents.
I'd like to add my two cents. You know, currently, if I'm correct, we have Library, Road Commission, DTF, Drug Task Force Park, Senior Millage and Veterans, and an ambulance millage that actually goes into the Townships. The one millage, this one for the one that came up last couple of weeks, is for a 501(c)(3). Do we have any other millages for 501(c)(3)'s? Have we done that, or, no?
Um, no, we do not. Now, our senior millage, we have different service providers that we contract with, but those funds do, are managed through the county.
All of those other millages are managed through the county.
The ambulance is not.
It goes to the Townships, so it goes to government, right?
Yes.
It's still managed by government. I mean, to me, I don't want to go down a slippery slope of saying, okay, this 501(c)(3), well, let's just do them all. Let's just, now we got 16 501(c)(3)'s coming from millages. That's my two cents worth, but whatever.
Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 7B, 2024 Survey Remonumentation Grant Agreement.
Motion send to full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, landfill tetra tech air monitoring agreement, Phase Two.
Make a motion to send that to full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, landfill, FLIR rental agreement extension, LFG Technologies.
Motion send that to full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Landfill. Item E, groundwater monitoring contract, WSP.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 7F, landfill leachate pretreatment, fluent pump rebuild from Easton Technologies.
Motion send that to full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 7G, landfill hydrogen sulfate scrubber system, Interior Global.
Make a motion to send that to full board.
Thank you.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 7H, Resolution 2405, placing proposed millage for parks and recs on the ballot.
So moved.
Support. Any discussion?
I would just note that our park director's here. If you have any questions, I know there were some meetings on it with some of the commissioners, some of that. So he is here. I think he's here. The landfill guy, landfill director's here too.
My discussion, and same thing I brought up in the meeting, because I represent District Six, I contacted all my Townships, and four of the six do not support this. And that's who I represent. I know you can say you put it on the ballot and let the people decide. But this is an additional tax that we're going to be asking for the residents. And we have four of them, I believe, tonight that we're going to be addressing. We just approved a renewal of, or sent it to full board. We didn't approve it for the road millage, but the funds for that. For this, the park and rec currently gets half a mil, which generates roughly $5 million. A million dollars goes back to the 31 municipalities. This is going to kick the millage up to $10 million and generate an additional $4 million for the county. And then, of course, an additional million will go out to the 31 municipalities, total of $2 million. That's going to be equally divided by the specs that are in, 25% of the taxes go back to the local. I've talked with Liz Masters, I don't know if she's here tonight, but some of the Townships don't know what they're going to do with the money in it. It's just going to sit there. You know, with Casco Township, they didn't have anything done with their park and rec money. It had to be 20-plus years, because they were sitting on over a quarter million dollars, because they never had a park down there. They finally did something. But I'm a little leery about having, raising taxes on people. It took for quite a while to get the business plans for the county parks that we have. We're still running almost dead even as far as the budget. And to generate an additional $4 million, and we're currently maintaining it, I think it's a little hefty asking the residents for another $5 million.
Number one, I don't think it's $5 million. I think it's $4 million, three-point something.
It's just under 3.5 million.
3.5 million is what .5 generates.
That's.
That's .5 currently. You said it was $5 million, but it's 3.5 million. 25% of the 3.5 million goes back to the cities, Townships, and villages.
This will be discussed at full board, but I got the paperwork, and we do have the parking rec guy here. But I believe that the figures that we're giving for this millage were what I just stated, a million dollars goes back currently.
Maybe have, maybe have Dennis just speak on that briefly. I think that would be helpful. Then I had a couple of points I wanted to make.
One thing while he's, I guess, walking up there, when I first got on the board, we had one park. And I think we're at nine now?
Yes, Don, yeah.
Yeah.
Eight with the intensity dredge cut, which is considered a park.
Okay.
So, yeah, just to talk about those numbers, I just wanted to make clear that right now our operating budget is $3,459,300. That's our current budget. So of that, 25% goes back to local communities, which is about $864,000 annually. So that's what they get. So what that means since 1995 is that our residents in all of those districts, 33 local units of government, have received back in those communities over $19 million. So that is money that was collected in those districts or in those areas and gone back into those areas for parks and rec development. So we have a very unique millage in the fact that we have a distribution program. There's not a lot of like this across the state. And that means that that money goes back into those communities, which is a very important part of this. If we were to increase the millage, this is an additional ask for 4.944. And so that's going to take that, that budget and double it. So it would take it to about $7,000, or $7 million. So if we did that, that means that the local communities are also going to benefit from that, which means about 1.7 will go back to them annually for their parks development. Now, there are some areas where there are smaller communities that are struggling to improve their parks. These funds help them with that development. I know you mentioned Casco, Commissioner Rushing, and I know that Casco was saving their funds to develop their new parks. They have a brand-new park that's coming online. I noticed that on the agenda tonight, there are three parks projects that are being supported by ARPA funds. So there's a need in St. Clair County for those improvements. When the Spark Grant Program came out a couple of years ago, we have 33 local units of government, 23 applications were applied for, for parks improvements. So they're desperate to improve their park systems and their park amenities. So we have a lot of smaller Townships that can't get shovel-ready projects because they don't have engineering services or design services. They don't have the funds to develop a half-a-million-dollar playground. Playgrounds are very expensive. So what they do with our millage funds is they take those millage funds and they, they put them back into those projects. Sometimes they save those funds so that maybe they can do it biannually or something, when they raise enough to actually support that project. So we are eight parks, 1,200 acres, and we have about 65 different facilities. So when we started our millage in 1995, 29 years on the same mil, same millage proposal. So it's just under a half mil. And in that 29 years, we have added multiple parks. We were one park in 1995. We're now eight fully-developed parks, 65 structure, facility structures that we use. We're developing the new park, which is what our residents have asked for. Part of this is because our residents have asked for park development that is clean restrooms, modern facilities, durable, higher-end amenities that you're going to see in those parks. And the response to that has been overwhelmingly positive. When you were talking about millage and supporting millages, I'll give you the history on ours. 71% approval rating since 1995 overall, in some areas above 80%. So there has not been, in the last millage, there wasn't one district or precinct that failed. So it was supported in every precinct across the county. So we're trying to do what we can to help those local communities. That's a big part of what we're trying to do, is help them develop those local parks, but also provide them facilities in our county parks that give them the things that they have asked for. Every park that we develop, we have, we have visioning sessions where we invite the public to come out and discuss with us the needs that they want to see in their county parks. We do surveys, we do all kinds of pre-work before we develop anything or put a shovel in the ground. And because we're adding what county residents have asked for in the southern part of the county with the North Channel County Park, that is a new park that is being developed. The price tag for that is over $4 million, which will not be done in one year, two years, or even six years. Right now, we have about $700,000 in grants from the state of Michigan ready to go. Those come at a cost, there's a match for them. So that comes out of our budget. So you're looking at about $730,000 in matches. But that's done over a series of years. You're talking, you know, two to six years that we can use those grants to actually develop that. But we have those grants in hand. And we have another one that's being recommended for acceptance this year by the state of Michigan for $300,000. So basically, in a nutshell, that is what our, our department does, and what we're trying to do for the county and county residents, is to continue to supply them with residential or recreational opportunities that meet their needs. And that's what this is about and what the proposal's for.
I agree with everything you just said. And we've had this half, and it has supported, I mean, the community has supported it. But if they turn this down, and then in two years, potentially, that's when the timeframe is, when the current one runs out, correct?
Correct.
And then if they don't approve the one mil, how are we going to take, because residents are getting tired of getting taxed, at least from what I'm hearing. So, and the figures that I was given from, well, you made the spreadsheet up, and for 2023, I'll round it to 4 million. It's 9,000 short of 4 million. $3,991,226.65. Those were your expenses. Total revenue was $3,970,529.44. In 2022, it was 5.4 million. The revenue was 4.9.
That would include grants, so would be, so if you've got a million-dollar grant, but I'm, the baseline is 3.4, so it's, like I said, that's.
Every year you see a spike, that means that there was a park that was added, that we received grant funds. That's where you're seeing those spikes.
I'm concerned that we're, I won't get the name of the game correct, but where they keep building, building bigger and bigger.
Ponzi scheme?
What's that?
Ponzi scheme?
No.
What are you talking about?
They got this, I don't play video games. They got that game, Build the Empire Bigger. They put the ads on TV, but I don't watch.
Commissioner Rushing, I understand that. And one of the things that we're trying to do is maintain what we have. And that's our current inventory of what our parks are. But there are things that are, that come with those parks when there's additions, improvements, changes. We have infrastructure in our parks, and some, Goodell's County Park is over 100 years old. So there's a lot of aging infrastructure that needs to be maintained. And that's part of that, to keep providing those services for the public.
I'm just.
I'd like, I'd like a chance to make a comment. You know, if I asked for a show of hands here, how many people hate taxes, everybody would raise their hands. I asked a show of hands, how many people like open space, recreation, place to take their kids, they'd all raise their hands. So like Dave, you know, I'm cheap. Not that Dave's cheap, but I don't like taxes, right? But I vote for the park millage. And I've got acreage, I got a farm, and I've, but I vote for the millage. And as a commissioner, what I did is say, well, people hate taxes, but you know what? In my district, and I reached out, I don't know, did any other commissioners ask for the information that I asked from you, Dennis?
Uh, no.
Well, I asked him to tell me, break it down by township, population, and money that went in, and the percentage of vote that supported it. And the K-PAC, 73%, Clyde, Emmett Village, 64%, Clyde, 67%, Village of Emmett, 68%, Grant Township, 66%, Greenwood, 64%, Kenokee, 62%, Lynn, 59%, Muzzy, 73%, Yale, almost 80. So people don't like taxes, but when I look at this, you know, I think the millage will pass. And it, I think it's being well-administered. You know, although I don't like taxes, I, I do, my kids go to Fort Grashit. We live out in Kenokee. We don't have any water, so they put their toes in the sand at Fort Grashit. I've become familiar with the Riverwalk Park down in, in Elginak. That's going to be a really nice place to go, see a little concert on the river or someplace. And it's all county park. You know, we've got county parks now that we have to have fees for non-residents, because there's people from all over coming to our parks. So I get what Dave's saying, well, I hate taxes, and let's not have taxes, and let's hate taxes. But of all the things we get taxed on, this is the one thing that warms my heart, that people use it. So, well, I know you don't have a heart, Jeff, but that's okay. It warmed my heart, I'm telling you, I'm telling you. So to make a pitch for that, to, to raise that kind of money and do that, and if it does fail, and I've asked myself that, I know what's going to happen. If the park fails, and the thing fails, we start selling stuff. If it fails and you can't afford a park and people don't want to support it, it'll be gone. But all these, in my district alone, you know, 80% in Yale, the folks that live in Yale that don't have the kind of acreage I live on, that want to get out some open space, 80% support that. I'm going to let them vote on that. I'm not going to keep that from them, because I don't want to get taxed on it. I mean, I don't want to do that to people. So that's my two cents worth. And I think you're doing a good job, Dennis, so.
I think you're doing a great job, too. So I just don't like taxes.
Understood.
Since I've got the floor, I'm just going to say one thing. And I know I attended that meeting, and thank you for the invite on that. I learned a lot during that. And I know that it's important to have the residents vote and choose what services they want. And all these services are very wonderful. And I know I probably sound like a broken record to some of you, but it's hard for me to ask, I think we should be cautious, really, on just, all these requests is just for more taxation, more taxation. And it falls on the back to the landowner. And it's very hard for me to look at the inflation and where it is currently, and ask people to just dig deeper into their pockets. And, I don't know, I think, I think we should just be cautious as to how much more taxation we want to put on the people during this time. I could be wrong. I hope I'm wrong, but I don't think so. That's a positive note, huh? But thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I oppose.
Motion carries. Item I, professional service agreement, fishback, site assessment, and investigation services, the EDA Business Center?
Jeff Donaldson, you want to, is Jeff there? Jeff and Dan Casey both, it's regarding the EDA business. Jeff is the, I guess, the administer, or the grant comes through the city, county.
Yeah, thank you. Well, just to give a bit of background on this request this evening, back in '23, the St. Clair County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority secured some grant funding for additional environmental assessment and environmental due care at the proposed site for the new EDA Business Center down at Desmond Landing. Earlier this month, with the assistance of purchasing staff, staff put together and, and released a request for qualifications from a list of engineering firms that was pre-qualified by the Board of Commissioners back in 2022. And that RFQ was looking to perform assessment and investigation portions of the grant-funded project. So a little bit of background on that, the grant that was secured in '23 was for $750,000. At this time, and under this RFQ, all the services are received, that are being sought are site assessment services, site assessment and investigation services, and then some reporting on that site of assessment investigative services. So five pre-qualified firms were given, provided a request for qualifications. One response was given. That response was reviewed by staff, met all the criteria listed under the RFQ. And at this point, we are seeking final action this evening. The reason we're seeking final action is because of the timing of this grant, the EDA, the project is being supported by not just this funding mechanism, several different funding mechanisms, some of which have very tight timeframes associated with it. And the projections are that in order to get out to bid on some of the other contracting associated with the project, this site assessment work needs to be done, and the reports need to be in fairly soon. When I say fairly soon, we're talking April timeframe. So that's why we're seeking to get this going here at the beginning of March, so that we can have those reports completed hopefully by the, by that timeframe, so that the rest of the portions of the funding mechanisms can begin to take place for the project. So in short, the budget within the grant that we received was for, had a line item of $49,000 for site assessment and investigation. Under this proposal, they're proposing to get the site assessment work done for $48,519, and then some additional work with regards to development of work plans that are required by Eagle, and some other reporting raises the RFQ, or the proposal by a little more than $5,000. So, so it's well within the allowable amounts provided for under the $50,000 grant.
Yeah, and I just want to emphasize that this is not county general fund monies. This is part of a grant that was already received. We've already approved the grant. The grant was for an up to $750,000. We know we don't need $750,000. So they, they're asking for the additional. We know we don't need 750,000, so they, they're asking for the additional site assessment work, and it is a very time-sensitive thing, so I would, is, any more questions for Jeff?
I had a question. Or you or Jeff, explain why it has to go through the county and EDA can't take care of it, because it has to be through governmental agencies. Explain that, either one of you.
Sure. So the, the, this pot of funding that's being, that this grant is coming from, it has to go through local units of government or authorities. So the entity that it's coming, that's coming through at the state, Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, our county's Brownfield Redevelopment Authority has administered four grants of, of this type, in that nature, through that, through that department. So when they were approached for funding on the project by engineers associated with the project and, and project lead people, they actually were the ones who referenced the County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and said, we, you know, we have a lot of experience working with them successfully four other times on the DT project, projects in Marysville, you know, up and down, throughout the county, if you will.
See, great, great life, great minds think alike. I asked the same question, looked into it, and they told me that, and you should blow your own horn when you can, Jeff, because it could have gone through the city or some other municipality, but we do have very adept people, Jeff Donaldson, working and planning and others, that are good at this. They've administered many of them, and the grant, when the grantor tells you, we'd really like to deal with these people that know what they're doing, that's who you have do it. That's my understanding why it landed in Sinclair County. But again, and Carrie can confirm this, that is not general fund money, that is grant money coming in, right?
That's correct.
It's like found money, just like ARPA money, we're getting this money. And it's for remediation of contamination that is known to exist in the county, correct? It's going to, they're going to study this, they're going to study and remediate contaminated soil, correct?
That's, that's from the Brownfield Redevelopment, that's, I thought, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority's perspective, that's the ultimate goal, correct?
So but this, this piece of it, this piece of it is for, this, this piece of it is for the analysis, the drilling, the studying, and, and remediation of contamination. It's not for some fancy shiny building yet, it's for the groundwork, right?
That's correct. This is not construction.
So if, if, if this other building they're talking about never happened, we'd at least get this ground, brownfield cleaned up, correct?
Yes, well, yeah, the, the projects work together, of course.
I'm not going, I'm, my, but my question is, you know, if something were to happen, this takes care of, of known contamination, and it's, it's money that's available for that purpose that covers some $85,000, which would cover that, correct?
That's correct.
That's, I'm good with that.
Good.
Let me make the motion for final action.
Roll call, please. Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Can we tidy up the amount, though, not to exceed, we know what that, I did some quick math, or do we, do we know what that is? I'm not real sure.
The contract actually has a clause in it that it cannot exceed the grant amount that's been awarded.
Okay, then, so we did a voice vote on a grant amount, do we know what that grant amount is as we sit here?
The total grant amount, $750,000.
So are we getting $750,000?
It's been awarded, yes.
So to respond, so the, the proposal is, before you this evening, the, the contract is, the, the proposal it's linked to is for 53,000 and change, and that actual proposal says the fishback will not exceed that. And, and also, there's several places throughout the contract where it references that they won't even spend any of it unless it's approved by Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy.
Just bear with me, what we're approving tonight is receiving a grant in a specific amount around.
So you're approving the contract to implement a portion of that grant?
We, we've previously passed the exception of an up to 750,000. So if it's 200,000, you get 200,000. You don't get 750,000.
But the, the time, the final action piece of it, to get this money to do this remediation, it's urgent because that money is coming, right? It's, you know, just got to get it in, is that?
It's pretty time-sensitive, they're looking to put the building out to bid here pretty quick, and there's multiple, this triggers other things in the grant process.
Yeah, that's, this, there's other funding pieces coming to that project that, that the county has nothing to do with, but there are, those portions, for example, construction portions of the grant, of the project, that aren't, have nothing to do with the county, those are on a timeframe, and they can't begin until the, the conditions in the soils are identified and reported.
So, so long as the clerk of the board knows the number, I'm, and it's, it's fine, I just, I didn't know the number, but I'm good with that, I'm sorry.
Did you want Dan to speak at all, or is there anything left for? Good? Thank you. Moving to item 8A, landfill activities report for November of 2023, December 2023, January 2024.
Make a motion to receive and file. Support.
Any discussion?
I'd like to see Matt make some comment or administrator just on developments because it was an ongoing, there's a lot happening out there, would this be a good time for him to comment on some things as far as developments towards remediation of that odor issue and some of that?
Yeah.
We just had the water report come out that showed, we'll let Matt do that. Okay with that, Matt?
Thank you, Commissioners. I've got a few items that I just wanted to update you all about. Probably the most significant one in my mind is that we did a pretty in-depth analysis of special waste streams that we've received at the landfill since we opened up Cell A. Cell A, of course, is the area that we have odor issues with. And we've determined that it's very likely that one particular waste stream that we received between January of 2020 and March of 21 is probably the main contributor, or the prime, or the only contributor to the elevated hydrogen sulfide that we've seen in that portion of the landfill. That was paper mill sludge that we received from Domtar just before they closed that facility in '21. And I just think that's pretty significant, and I just wanted to make sure I share with that with you. I've got, we have a write-up on that, if anyone is interested on more in-depth information, be happy to share that with any of the commissioners on the board. The larger, higher-capacity supplemental flare actually arrived on site yesterday. It's sitting on a trailer, waiting for installation and swapping with our current supplemental flare. This will double our capacity, allow us to pull harder on selected lines, and add some additional gas wells to that flare to pull harder, all of which, of course, is trying to mitigate and further our situation so that we have less of an issue for our I'm hopeful that we'll have that flare up and running and installed before the end of this month. We have some infrastructure things to do, that's some piping and fittings to order, that design, we just finalized today on what we're doing. And I will add that the last item I had before you tonight on the agenda for approval was for H2S hydrogen sulfide scrubber system for a pretty significant cost. That unit will be installed with, co-located with that supplemental flare. And the gas that we're pulling out of Cell A will go through that scrubber prior to going to the flare. We have some emissions requirements that we have to meet for SO2, which is the byproduct of burning, one of the byproducts of burning the landfill gas. And that's actually going to be a requirement for us to make sure we have that in place, given the elevated levels that we've been seeing of hydrogen sulfide. Residential well, water well testing, as Commissioner Samasco mentioned, the county health department did sample five locations, five homes, well, four homes and the, our neighbors just to the east. And of those five drinking water testing, four of them came back, well, it was tested, first of all, for volatile, volatile organic compounds, VOCs, and for metals. That was under advisement from the state on, here's what you need to be looking at for testing drinking water. So of the five tests, all five came back with no detection of any VOCs in anyone's drinking water. And four of the five homes came back with no, with metal detections that were below the allowable limits, we're talking part per billion, part per trillion levels, with the exception of one home, which was, had elevated arsenic in that drinking water. That home is actually owned by the county, it's one of the homes we have on Smith Creek Road. It hasn't been occupied for about two and a half years now. And it's suspected that the fact that that system has been sitting, not being exercised and the water moving, may be contributing. That being said, there's, the Sinclair County groundwater is known to have elevated arsenic in areas. But I would just let you know that I think that those are positive results. The testing was done on homes pretty much all around the landfill perimeter and relatively close, so I think that's significant as well. That report that the health department written has actually been posted on the county website under our area on the website.
I think this came out just the last couple days, didn't it? When did this come out?
We, we don't allow questions.
Hey, Don?
What is a catch? He said that the water testing in five, five homes. Five homes that were around the perimeter of the landfill was what I.
Let, let me comment on that real quick, Don, just because I did call Liz King, because I was interested in this, and I asked her on the testing, this was, the testing was done by Michigan Department of Environmental, Great Lakes Energy, through their lab in Lansing. So like when I, and when I send a client for drug testing, it's usually 10 or 12 panel tests, this was a, in addition to the various organic compounds, there were 50 violent compounds that were tested, so, and that was, that's, that's part of what I was getting at back in December, not to just test for bacteria, right? So Eagle did these tests, it was done by state lab, and I talked to Carrie, our administrator, about, and I talked to Liz King about the selection process, and it, is this posted online, that water study, is that online yet?
Uh, yes, it is, it's on the landfill.
When did that go online? When did that go online?
Yesterday.
Yesterday, so this. Well, what I, no, 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 what I was told, here's what I was told by Liz King. I says, I asked her, I says, Liz, are we all done here? Have we, have you guys tested this? Thank you for the help. I also asked for a report on our staff time, it took about 24 hours of staff time, they, they went and, they, they selected some homes close by, knocked on a door, and if you look at the report online, you'll see, they wanted to make sure it goes, the five homes were all around. And this testing was, was, there was some cost involved and some, you know, collection things involved, so they started with five homes. I think they tried, if you talk to Liz King, and, and I believe her, when she tells me, they tried to make it a, to get a sample around the landfill. Now, if you want to call this a start or the end of the story, that's one thing, but at least, and I, and I did ask, I think it was Liz, to send me the report, she sent me all five reports from Eagle, so I can share that with you, because I wanted to see them. Yeah, and so, so, but the other thing is, if people want more tested, I said, are people calling, I asked Liz, are people calling for more testing? Are people calling the health term? She says, no, no one's called in to say, please test me.
Do you need to understand that you're asking the Commissioner that it's a legal test, or do we prefer to control it now?
Well, at this point, at this point, I can tell you is that, you know, I was following up on, quote, my motion, right? I said, what do we do for water testing? That's why I say, ask them to have to come every month and say a little bit, or administrator. So here we have the testing, I'll get you the results, I'm going to send them to Bob Usatelski, I'm going to send them to Rob Phelis if he wants them, you know, here's the testing. It'll help me understand if, is it good testing or bad testing? I don't know, I'm not a scientist, but it looks like a pretty thorough testing, right? And if you look online, look at the report, call me, we can talk about it, or call, you know, we'll call Matt and talk about it, go meet him if you want and look at it. So I, I believe that the county's taken steps to test, I think we've taken steps to test that are, that are appropriate so far. It's like a first step. We had a hit at our, our county piece of property has some arsenic in it, which is down in a well, in a stagnant well, hasn't been used in many years, I'm, you know, we're going to look at that. But at least this plume, if you understand the geology under the landfill, everything tends to move towards the river, towards the east. Even out at the old Thomas landfill dump in Kenokee Township, there was stuff years ago, when I was in the prosecutor's office, moving towards the east, moving in that direction. So, but rather than just test that area, or just test the west, where there's nothing, they did, they did make a ring, so. And if there's, we're open to discussion, I mean, I won't speak for the whole board, but if they, somebody thinks we need to do more testing, maybe we can do more testing, but take a look at that and then, but I don't think Matt, I don't believe Matt's intentionally saying, telling us something's not true. You know, I, I do trust Matt, he has issues, but those aren't one of them, so, you know. Sorry, pal.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. The fourth item I have is that we did submit notification to Blue Water Renewables earlier this week, a notification that we are, we do have additional landfill gas in, with respect of our agreement with Blue Water Renewables. If we have a definable amount of excess gas that is, they're not burning in their gas-to-energy facility, we are to notify them and say, okay, more equipment, what's your plan to take care of this and deal with the additional gas that we're generating? Right now, all of the additional gas is going through one of two flare locations. But just so you are aware, we have made that notification formally to Blue Water Renewables now.
Well, this is something I asked you about back November, and we weren't sure if we were there, but now you've told me that with the development and some of the things you've pushed out, that they show that we do have a sustainable amount of excess gas.
And, and that was one of the reasons for waiting to have the gas, future gas projection.
And it meets, it meets the contract provision, so perhaps they can get more gas-to-energy generation out there, is that kind of how it worked?
Thank you. That's the goal.
They, they know it's coming. I was with the president of DT Vantage two weeks ago, and I told him where we were at, and he said they'd been communicating with Matt, so they're well aware of it.
That was just another simple thing that, you know, okay, we have too much gas that's going into the community, let's do something with it, right? So it sounds like.
Yeah, they have to know what the projections are to make decisions about what they.
And these are all engineered studies, these are all things CTI help you with to determine that, right? So.
Yeah, I didn't generate that, did you?
And on that point, you know, you talked about this, this, what you called it, writing, but you did send me this document, assumed you sent it to all the commissioners, discussion of hydrogen sulfide generation-related waste compositions, Smith Creek landfill, multiple pages, hate to think I'm a HS2 junkie, but I found it interesting. I thought it was good information. And the Domtar waste was in the area of the cell that seems to be high, the high concentrations of HS2. It came in at the same time, it's on that, it's in the right lift and all that, so I think you're on the right track. So maybe we finally, quote, know what's causing that, why we have this after 15 years of new problems, all of a sudden this big smelly problem. Well, I think, it makes sense to me that you're onto that, but the question I have is, it's not dated, it's not signed, it's not on anybody's letterhead. Does CTI do that, or why don't we have somebody signing off on that?
I'm unhappy to reformat that.
I mean, is that your, is that your work product?
No, that's not mine.
That's CTI helped, who did that? CTI did that, or?
Yes.
Well, I'd appreciate it, because I think that's the kind of document that shows, another thing that shows is due diligence to regulators. You know, we're worried about people coming in and doing enforcement action, and there's people talking about, oh, we're going to have a class action, send that to the class action lawyer, you know, send some of this other stuff to the class action, let them look at that, too, get that out there so people know what's being done. And if we're not doing it right, tell us, but if we're doing it right, then I want people to know about it. That's all.
And finally, I just have one more quick note. As you might recall, on early January, we did do air monitoring physically on site for H2S with some fixed monitors. Unfortunately, those monitors, the minimum detection limit was not where it should have been, it wasn't what it was advertised to be. So we are going with phase two of fixed air monitoring, you guys, I believe you were approving that, I don't know if that was on tonight's agenda or last one, so I'm trying to keep it straight. Those units will be delivered to the landfill next week and be installed, and we have currently contracted with Tetra Tech, the company who's going to administer that program, for a 90-day window. They have verified that these sensors going in will measure down to 10 part per million as opposed to 100 previously, unfortunately. So that will be kicking off next week, and we will periodically update the board and the public with results of that model. With that, that's all I have tonight, unless anyone has any additional questions.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, other environmental public work matters this evening? None? Can I get a motion to receive and file those jackets?
10A and B, I'll make a motion to receive.
10A and B, I'll make a motion to receive and file. Second. The grand commissioner's annual report and also the monthly PERC financial documents.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11, receive and file packets.
Make a motion.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to adjourn. Some move. Thank you.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to change the order. We're going to go to Ways and Means Committee now. So I'd like to call the Ways and Means to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Smasco.
Present.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Present.
Commissioner Bone.
Here.
Commissioner Trello.
Present.
Commissioner Vandembosh.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here. I'm seeing no additions or anything. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
Motion.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. We have three citizens wishing to be heard. I'm going to give them in the order that I was giving them. Sandra Tannahill first.
Hi, my name's Sandra Tannahill. I'm from Wales Township. I'm also the planning commissioner there. I am in support of Citizens for Local Choice. I was ecstatic when I heard that you had this on the agenda. And I just wanted to say I'm so much in support that I've actually spent hours outside collecting signatures. I've been to events. I've done everything in my power to make sure that we can keep local control. I will be devastated as a planning commissioner in November if these if these laws, we have to abide by them, basically. If we don't mirror the state laws, which are bare minimum protection for citizens, we will have to rip up our ordinances for solar, wind, and battery storage facilities. We will have to start over. We will have to mirror the bare minimal laws from the state that they've given us, which do not give protections to the residents. That's why I have been out every single day collecting signatures to make sure that we get 550,000 signatures by May. So I'm here to ask for your support in every this is our Hail Mary. This is all that we have. We have a couple of months to get this done. We have a couple of months to be able to get these signatures, to get it on the ballot for November, so that Michigan residents can then decide, yes, we want local control. I can tell you that this is a bipartisan issue. We have 90% of Democrats and Republicans saying that they want local control. They do not want the state taking over. We have the support of the Michigan Fire Bureau, Michigan Township Association, Association of Builders and Contractors. I can tell you there's more, but the press release has not been released. I'm asking for your support.
Just a comment, we're going to be addressing this, but if anybody in here, because I definitely support this, and I think everybody knows that, if there's anybody in here that does support that hasn't signed, please somebody and get signed up that you on the approval to get this on the November ballot. Eileen Tash.
I've got to watch the time. All right, three things. Number one, I am Eileen Tash, Vice Chair of the Saint Clair County Republican Party and Co-Chair of the Elections Integrity Committee. We have submitted a resolution, a proposed resolution. I believe all of you received it by email, so I'm not going to go into it. I would just, we would request that you adopt it or some form of it and place it on the next agenda if possible. Number two, most of you, I believe, have received, as I have, an email from retired Lieutenant Scott Jones of the Saint Clair County Sheriff's Department regarding allegations of his conduct by Sheriff Matt King regarding the arrest of his brother, Deputy Marcus King. All I'm asking is that you do not dismiss this as some disgruntled employee or somebody that has a bone to bear. All I'm suggesting is that you take a serious look at this document. Because although the sheriff has exclusive authority to administer his duties, you control the procedures. And if we remember, it wasn't long ago that Sheriff Matt King would not support the Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolution because he was concerned about his budget. Now, we have a crisis at the board, a serious crisis. And there are sheriffs now around the country. And we, if you've heard the news recently, it is documented that our government, the federal government, the Biden administration, is providing unlimited free travel plane tickets to any destination in the U.S. And this is how the trafficking is occurring with the women and the children, and it is going to come here. And I talked to Sheriff Matt King about this. What are we going to do? Do we have a plan? Some sheriffs are training up their citizens, and his response is always, I don't address hypotheticals. He just said the border is definitely a problem. Okay, so all I'm asking you is, we need to take a look at this. We as citizens deserve better, and we want a sheriff that's going to protect us or at least have a plan. Number three, Clay Township and the county are the funds, and this goes to Commissioner Vandembosh. I just learned that you are asking, I didn't see it on the list today, the abandonment for Clay Township for 125,000 and exercise equipment for 176,000 for Ari Bartson down there in Clay. And I'm just asking on behalf of the citizen of Algonquin and your district that you provide a breakdown of where you're distributing these funds. And exercise equipment for 176,000? I don't know if you think so as our commissioner. I respect that, but we would like to have some kind of breakdown. Thank you.
Liz Masters.
Thank you, and and thank you for your service. I'm going to reflect on Sandra Tannahill, one of our residents that just spoke prior to me. It takes a lot of guts to do that. This fight didn't start two years ago. Wales Township was in the fight approximately five years ago. It takes a long time for commissioners like this to make a name for themselves for Wales Township, which is tiny, 3,300 residents. Our fight's gone as far as state at this point. They had it all laid out. This is the final straw. We will keep fighting, and we will get those signatures. We just need all of you, and we need all of you to take a petition home, and this will be done. We won't go, as Commissioner Rushing had once said, quietly in the night. So I just, I commend people like you, and I commend this board for listening. So the whole moral of this is not whether you oppose to solar, wind, or battery storage. Technology is coming, and technology is going to improve. It's that these technologies nowadays, we're not going to jump feet first into the water and just accept it. And these voices that we're hearing, it takes a lot of guts. We do not want to lose those voices. These people on this board were once in the audience, and they wanted to be heard, too. So I want to reflect on that. If we lose that, and it goes to the MPSC, Michigan Public Service Commission, it is literally an appointed board of three, chosen by the governor. So I'm sure they're not going to know how to pronounce K-PAC, first off, let alone worry about little old whales or 150-year-old farm. They're not going to worry about any of that. When the gal stood up here about water, I noticed our commissioners didn't shoo her away. That is a voice, that is her house, that is her water. So this is what it's about. It's not whether you oppose something or not right now, it's that you can be heard, and that Citizens for Local Choice. So please, I reach out to the public. Please reach out to sign today. And I do have faith in our commissioners that they will support our local voice. Thank you.
Again, I am Diane Hewlett. I serve on the executive board of the Saint Clair County GOP, and I do support for those that spoke before me. While I want to reassure everyone, this is bipartisan. We have people on both sides. Has really nothing to do with that, strictly about the choice. And I believe that the local townships, the local boards, such as yours, should be in control and not dictated by the state. And I further ask that I have petitions with me. Would I be allowed to promote that throughout the group here and ask for signatures? And I ask that you all help in some way, whatever way you can. There are local websites, and if you could put those on your personal pages, if you're allowed to do that, support. If we could just get everyone to fill out one page, who cannot get 12 signatures? This is, we're pleading with you because we have a massive, massive effort going on. I understand 73 counties out of the 83 are participating. That speaks volumes, or should, that people don't want this. So thank you for giving me my moment, and I hope you all support. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to updates. Do we have any updates?
I just, I guess I got two. So we did receive the emails regarding, I guess, requests for the election integrity. I know, Steve, you've been working on it. I've been talking to you quite some time about it.
The BOC had passed a resolution in December, and I saw it. I felt it was too long, some other issues, and I I've got a proposal I'll make. I would reduce it from 12, nine or 12 pages down to about two. I'll submit that once I see what they've submitted. I think I had already sent it out. But my opinion was put on on agenda as you have. We'll discuss it. We can either pass that one, pass a different one, or pass nothing. We can talk about it, look at it, and figure that out.
Going to look at that for next month?
But I think it is important, you know, my my position on resolutions, you know, what are resolutions, is kind of like editorial page in a newspaper. They don't have the the effect of law, but it it shows transparency. It shows what people that you what you represent is how they believe, how they think. I'd like to see us look at that and consider passing it. I think we'll do that. So that's it.
And the second thing, I know we have the resolution supporting Citizens for Local Choice Initiative. Previously, we had a resolution come before us, I don't know, was it three, four months ago? As far as local control, so we did pass a resolution previously.
I've read that one, and there's some references to this, the new law that was passed, and I didn't have time to I didn't have time to sort that out.
I'm just saying, we did pass a, I just wanted everybody to know, we did pass a resolution previously supporting local control, and obviously, this is here before us.
Who sent that one in, Jeff? Where'd that one come from? Who produced that?
So there were several samples that came from Michigan Association of Counties, and then Chairman Bone indicated that it would be good to put it on this month's agenda.
So Michigan Association of Counties is obviously pro-local choice, correct?
They have been, I'm on the county administrators' list, so every time a county is passing one of these resolutions, they email it out to the group.
But I don't know a lot about that organization, but is it fair to say, Jeff, that Michigan Association of Counties is in favor of local control, or are they in favor?
No, no, they support that.
They support local control.
So local control.
Yeah, then, I mean, I have no problem considering an additional resolution that's been proposed by the Associate, Michigan Association of Counties or Michigan Association for Townships. Anything we can do to help, I think we should do.
On the updates, could I request this to be put on the committee for next month, the election integrity? So we do address it?
We just said that.
I know. Put it on our agendas.
For the local choice or for the election integrity?
Election integrity.
Choice he brought up, we were talking about the election.
We just, we talked about election integrity before that.
I think they did that.
And I just said, put it on the agenda.
Okay, we're going to put it on the agenda.
Yes.
That's all I'm trying to verify, is that we will be looking at it next month.
And then are we going to look, we'll look at this other agenda, other one as well? Is that what we're doing?
That's on the agenda, and we're...
That's on the agenda for this evening.
Tonight, okay, good. All right, very good.
Any other updates? Conceptual initiatives?
None.
We have none. No old business. Moving on to 7A, Intervention Center Office Chair Purchase, Standard Office Supply.
Motion. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. 7B, Commissioner Beeden, District 3, American Rescue Plans Project, Pine Grove Park Accessibility and Discovery City Children's Museum.
Make a motion to move that to full board.
Support.
Any discussion?
I would just like to say that it's really two projects done by the city. The city is requesting this money to make Pine Grove Park more accessible for our residents and those visiting that park. And then they're also looking at doing a children's museum in downtown, utilizing an empty space downtown to create opportunities for kids to play and and be a part of that. So I will not be at the next meeting, so I would appreciate your support tonight on this project and then at the next meeting as well.
Just, I'm not going to be at the next meeting either. I very rarely miss meetings, but because of Easter, this 35 years I've been going to Myrtle Beach with my friends, and I will be gone for eight days of golf and head fitting in before Easter. So I won't be here either. I do support this, and hopefully, the commissioners at the full board support it also. You want to say something, Steve?
No, I was just had a thought I probably shouldn't mention. That's okay. About golf.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7C, Commissioner Trello, District 4, American Rescue Plan Project, Baker's Field Pathway Extension.
Make a motion to Senate to full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7D, Commissioner Trello, District 4, American Rescue Plan Project, Thompson Pond Park Improvements.
Make a motion to Senate to full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7E, Commissioner Baldwin, District 2, American Rescue Plan Project, Lee Kirin Woods Campaign for the Ages Housing Project.
Make a motion to move that to full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7F, Pure Storage Hardware Purchase, Information Technology.
Make a motion to Senate to full board. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7G, Public Guardian Manning Table Change, Case Manager Position.
Motion.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7H, Sheriff's Office Manning Table Change, Reclassify Marine Patrol Training Sergeant to Lieutenant.
I make a motion, send it to full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. 7I, Commissioner Vandembosh, District 7, American Rescue Plan Project, Clay Township Police Radios.
Make a motion, send it to the full board.
Support.
Any discussion?
Just quick, I have some coming up, I think, next month, if they get it in for the St. Clair Police Department. I've kind of let Dave be the point person on when they're ready, when they're not ready, so he's been, he's been guiding me.
And you get to decide what you want with those, and they follow in the American Rescue Plan Project, so, does this, because before you were saying the radios, are they up, technology ready to go with it? I know we were discussing about the fire department.
Well, we're in the first work on, the first goal, let's try and get all the police done first, and then we'll work on getting the fire done after. Police is going to be kind of our, a little bit of our guinea pig, because they're the smaller, the two.
This is Clay Township only, though, right?
Right.
Do you have an estimated cost?
For Clay?
Yeah.
Clay's going to be $60,000.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. 7J, Resolution 2407, Supporting Citizens for Local Choice Initiative.
Make motion, send it to the full board.
Support.
Any discussion?
Any interest in doing that for final action, since we had some people here? I have no problem with.
I'll modify it for final action.
Or may?
I'll modify it for final action.
Support that.
All right. Any more discussion?
Roll call.
I'm very much in support of this, so, and I've been talking with a lot of my townships and been involved as much as I can. Yes, roll call, please.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Commissioner Torello?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
7K.
I'd make the motion.
Have a second?
Support.
Now, I will probably do a horrible job of explaining this, because Georgia was the one that was actually sat through the things. What I was talking with Anthony Farlini, he is the Macomb County Clerk, and about 40 counties have adopted the software. They were seeing a lot of fraudulent deed things coming through, where people were, you know, basically scam artists and stuff. So, they have this software that basically can protect fraudulent documents. I guess there's a big movement nationally for this type of stuff, and it was something that he mentioned to me, and then I actually talked to Angie about it, and then Angie, and then Bruce, I don't think Bruce is here, and then Georgia, if I'm not mistaken, sat through a webinar, seminar, what you may, you know, be, and then that's how that kind of got here, so it's something to help with. I think all of us understand the, getting a, every day you get some scam sent to your phone.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. At this time, we have any other Ways and Means Matters?
I want to address this issue with, that Eileen Tej brought up on Scott Jones. You know, for people to get up in front of me and say, hey, you should take this serious, I want, I lean to know that I got an email from Scott Jones, as all the other commissioners did, at about 10 o'clock on Friday. He had a response for me about 11 o'clock on Friday, and I explained to him that I took his matter seriously. I reviewed what he had said, who he had responded to, he had issues with challenging some actions by the local sheriff and so forth. I explained to him that he'd gone to the attorney, Steve Gilliot from the prosecutor's office, he'd done other things, I said, that's all, you know, that's the right thing to do. I explained to him the role of the county commission and, and the scope of the county commission, that this commission has a legal obligation to fund constitutional offices to the level of serviceability. We cannot tell them how to operate their office. And, you know, without going into, say, the merits of whether what he says has any merit or not, I did send that off to the sheriff, and I sent Mr. Jones my reply to the sheriff so he could read it, and, and Mr. Jones wrote back and thanked me for advising him on the scope of what we do and what we can't do and so forth. Eventually, you know, I just had to tell Mr. Jones that it appears he wishes to seek civil or some other legal process, he's doing that, so we do take it serious. I want, I lean to know, we do take it serious. When people send stuff in, we look at it, I don't want that kind of presentation to make it look like we don't take it serious, because we do. And I know the sheriff takes it serious, and I've spoken to the sheriff about some of this too, so, you know, we do take it serious. I just want you to know that. Thank you.
Okay, anything else, Ways and Means Matters? All right. Nine, information only? Don't have any? Can I have a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Stand to adjourn.
Could I request a five-minute bathroom break?
No.
Okay, start without me.
So last year in 2023, there were seven hundred or three hundred and seventy-one programs that St. Clair County residents attended. And well over five thousand St. Clair County residents attended programs either within the county or anywhere in the state of Michigan. So we like to include that because it shows that St. Clair County residents also attend programs in surrounding areas, maybe even across the state or on campus. So we still, that's something that we collect in our evaluations that we do is the county of residence. So. And while we have eight staff housed here in the St. Clair office, there were twelve MSU Extension staff that reported data for St. Clair County. So that just shows that there's, there's impact staff in the surrounding areas that are still impacting the residents here in the county. Flipping to the inside there, as you know, Lori Worchuck and Val Fuzee are county-paid MSU Extension staff. So last year, there were almost seven hundred youth enrolled in 4H and nearly three hundred adult volunteers, which I will say those are some of the highest numbers that we have in the area. 4H is a volunteer-based program. And Lori Worchuck has done an amazing job over her many years of service to build that strong foundation of volunteers here. And together, they reached over twenty-five thousand participants through their various outreach programs. They have all kinds of school enrichment programs and different workshops throughout the year. So they have very extensive reach. Carol Bublitz and Jennifer Evenson, they work under the SNAP Ed grant. So they reach residents from preschool age all the way up to older adult senior citizens and everyone in between. So working under that grant, they target folks of low income and schools that have fifty percent or more free or reduced lunch. So last year, they reached a total of over nine thousand people through their various different methods and resources. So they do most of their educational work through a series format. So that's typically once a week for six weeks, and there are some variations in there. But it, it just shows that we use that series format because we know through our evaluation data that the more exposure we have with our participants, the greater that behavior changes. We're pretty fortunate to have Andy Northrup based in St. Clair County. He's our only tourism educator in the state. He also does some government and community vitality education as well. But a main focus of his work is with the FIT assessments, which stands for First Impressions Tourism Assessment. So he does a lot of work across the state with that and kind of does a deep dive with a specific community to really assess what those first impressions are for visitors, to increase those practices, to bring more people into their community. So last year in 2023, he was wrapping up some work with the St. Clair County Fair Board. So that was a pretty unique partnership with the Fair Board there. That was for a, a fair and festival assessment. So using those same methods for a community, but really that, that specific lens through that fair. So to learn more about that, you can, he provided a QR code there, or you can go to the website and learn about the impacts and changes they made as a result of that. I'm sure you remember Phil Kate. So he was the, the interim director when, for that six-month period before I came on board in this role. So he serves on our field crops team. He's housed in Lapeer County, but he works pretty extensively with farmers and producers over here in St. Clair County as well. One program that he coordinates that is, has been wildly successful is the Virtual Breakfast Series, which is a weekly online Zoom update that he runs throughout the growing season. And it, he has guest speakers and, and people come on and they talk about different timely, relevant topics. So he's had a lot of reach with that. So last year, that reached four thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine live participants. Those were also recorded and shared out on YouTube and through podcast format. So he reached many more through those avenues as well. He also had a following in eleven foreign countries, which is pretty awesome to see the extent of the reach and that, and that impact. We have Jackie Raybine housed here in St. Clair County as well. So a lot of her programs are, require a co-facilitator. So she works a lot with the other health educators in the surrounding area. And together, they reached over a thousand participants in their programs. And again, like Jen and Carol, most of their programs are a series format. So I just like to differentiate that because some of our programs are a one-time workshop or presentation, and some they're seeing for six, ten, twelve weeks, the same people for each, for each week. So the older population is, is a huge demographic for them. They also have some partnerships with local court systems. So they, they've gotten some court-appointed participants for their anger management, mindfulness, stress, stress less mindfulness classes. We are wrapping up the final months of the Michigan Vaccine Project, which is a three-year grant that we received through the CDC. So just in 2023, that team reached four hundred thousand residents statewide. And, and that was through their various materials and resources that they created. They had a lot of success with TikTok. They created TikTok videos and podcasts and YouTube videos, all kinds of different social media, hard copies, articles, all kinds of different things. And Alyssa Maturnan, she is housed here in the St. Clair County office as well. So she has quite a bit of local impact as well. And she's, she's been really involved with some local initiatives like the, the Blue Water Immunization Project, BWIP. Michigan Sea Grant also extends up here, mostly in the St. Clair River area. So last year, Erica Klyte partnered with the Friends of the St. Clair River to do some education with them on identifying and reporting invasive species, and then how to properly wash your vessel so we're not spreading those invasive species to other bodies of water. So, so quick and dirty overview of our, of our year. My message on the front cover really focuses on collaborations and partnerships, and we could not do the work that we do without our many, many partnerships. So that's just something we're always looking to expand and work better with others so we can have a greater impact in the community as well as beyond. Any questions?
No, thank you for great work.
Thank you.
Any conceptual initiatives this evening? No old business, moving on to new business, seven A. Contract approval request for WGRT Veteran Affair Advertising Contract.
Motion sent to the full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item B, the Health Department Marijuana Operation Oversight Grant Agreement.
Motion.
Thank you. Support?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item C, the Community Mental Health Board Reappointments. There are several.
Motion.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item D, Veterans Affair, the County Burial Benefit Proposed Increase.
Make a motion to send it to the full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item E, the Community Mental Health Board District One Appointment.
Motion.
Full board.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item F, Resolution Twenty-four dash oh-six, Placing Proposed Port Huron Museum Milage on the Ballot. I believe we have members of the museum here, and they have a presentation for us this evening.
Does anyone need a copy of the presentation?
I believe we all have it at our place.
Good evening. I am Veronica Campbell, Executive Director of the Port Huron Museum. And with me, I have.
Michael Miedinger, also on the Board of Trustees for the Port Huron Museums.
I just wanted to present our museum milage proposal. The Port Huron Museum has been around for fifty-six years. We started in nineteen sixty-eight. We've been serving the entire county through preserving and telling the local history story. It's not just Port Huron focus. We've made it our mission to, to tell everybody's story from the local area. As you can see, our proposed milage, we are asking for a six-year new milage seeking a quarter mil. It represents twenty-five cents per thousand dollars of trust value. The milage dollars would go to help support operations, staffing, community programming, exhibits, and artifact preservation, and continued organizational development of all current and future locations of the museums. We currently have five historic sites, the Carnegie Museum, originally the Public Library in downtown Port Huron, the Fort Crash at Lake Station and Lighthouse, the Fort Crash at Coast Hospital, the Thomas Edison Depot, and the Huron Lightship, including over twenty thousand items in our archives and our collections. For over fifty years, we have been trusted stewards, working to preserve and promote the culturally significant histories of all of St. Clair County. We strive to share the history and culture from all over the region as one of the biggest tourist attractions in the county. We have seen unprecedented growth over the past few years and have grown to meet the demand for educational programming, accessibility, and bringing in local exhibits. Last year in 2023, due to our free admission initiative, we saw over fifty-six thousand visitors to all five, all four of our sites. And we see this as being the potential to continue being that catalyst for tourism to the area. We have provided professional services to multiple historic organizations throughout the county. In order to continue growing, we need the support of a, of a county milage. Without this opportunity, we have to reevaluate and scale back our current operations. We can either continue to grow or then be placed, be a place envisioned for the entire county and economic driver, or we will stay small and not united in our local history. Proposed with the milage, we, we are looking at providing free admission for all county residents. This would also include free school field trip tours to all county schools. We have identified forty historical and cultural organizations, actually over forty organizations that would be, that would be beneficiaries to a funding program. And then we would also provide professional resources to all cultural organizations throughout And this is just a rough idea of what that funding would look like, what that funding request program would look like. So as I said, there's over forty historical and cultural organizations. We would set aside at least three hundred thousand dollars in milage funds. We're looking at providing up to ten thousand dollars for funding requests. We're looking at nonprofit organizations under five hundred thousand dollar operating Some examples of historical and cultural organizations throughout the county. And as you can see, they're spread throughout all districts. And I just ask the Board of Commissioners to, to consider having this be placed on the ballot in August, and really letting the, letting the voter take the decision. Any questions at this time?
Got a question?
Yes. I was gonna say, you look like you have a question.
Well, I always have questions, it seems. But to start, let's say with your historical, cultural organizations, you had a listing throughout the districts. Does your, does your budget currently support those all financially, or that's just a list of the types that we have?
Of the, I'm sorry, of the.
You have a listing of District One, Two, Three, Four, Five. Do you, do you currently pay money to all those?
We do not.
You do not, okay. So why did you list that?
Those would be the organizations that would benefit from, from the, from us receiving these milage. We would have, these organizations would benefit from the funding program that would then be.
So you have a funding program adopted that would kind of like our park, give money to these types of things, okay?
Yeah, but they would have to apply.
They would have to.
So they're not guaranteed funding.
Everybody would receive something. Not everybody would receive up to ten thousand.
And that decision would be made by some board, but not by a county or township government, correct?
Correct. We would, we would have a.
So five oh one C three board, whoever made that board up would then decide how the funds are distributed.
It would be a designated committee.
All right. But the taxpayers' funds would be funneled through a five oh one C three board, not through elected representatives. The other question, you know, to me, I'll be honest, and I don't know if I talked to you, but I got this maybe, I don't know, a month ago, first I heard of it. You know, and, and the issue of like, I was talking with, when Jeff made a comment, these, this type of thing would be a place for to be charitable giving. And the county, we have the library, road commission, drug task force, park, senior milage, veterans, ambulance through the townships. Those are all through elected officials and all provide what I think is by county affairs. This seems to cross over into an area that's more charitable giving than, say, county government. Do you agree with that, or how would you respond to that? I think taxpayers and citizens might have that question.
Yeah, I would see this as being a service, and we provide services and programs and exhibits for all of our county residents. This would be a means to provide that service so that the museum is able to continue these and, you know, grow upon these for all residents.
Do you see that, let's say, a united way, community foundation, let's do milages for those five oh one C threes. Any reason not to do milages for those on the same basis?
I, you know, I see some of those as, they are currently, you know, there's a fundraising group, they.
So they have, they have enough, they don't need anymore, but you guys need more, kind of a thing?
We do.
Yeah.
Do other counties have a similar model?
Yes, there's quite a few. In fact, I do know that the Muskegon County, which is very similar to St. Clair County, does have a museum system very similar to ours. They have about five or six sites themselves that is purely supported by, by a county milage.
And those, do they have a similar funding source to their, their local cultural and historic societies?
I don't believe that they have that aspect.
Okay.
I would just like to just wrap up by saying, you know, I consider everything, I try to consider everything really well. I just don't know enough about like your spending plan and this type of thing to convince me. I would not support this at this time because, as I said, it seems like more charitable giving. It's a slippery slope to me to just start putting five oh one C threes out on the ballot for milage funding, not through elected officials. If there's other patterns for that, I mean, I have just never seen it, not familiar with it. So I don't think it's timely. We also have three other milages at least coming up this year. You know, at some point, I think you reach a saturation level too. So from a strategic standpoint, on whether it would pass or not, you may want to look at that. So that's, that's my two cents.
Got it. Do you have a current budget that you're operating under?
We do, yes.
What, what amount is that?
We have a current operating budget of eighty-one thousand dollars.
Okay. And I have to see if I'm doing my math right. If you get a quarter, that's going to get you about one point eight, one point nine million?
Correct.
Would that cover salaries now? Do you have anybody on board that's getting paid?
Yes, I have four full-time staff and then fifteen part-time seasonal. And that, and it currently does pay those salaries, but we would be looking to.
Just roughly, approximately, what are those salaries currently?
Uh, they're about, they're under four hundred thousand.
Okay. Would this give everybody raises?
Yeah.
Okay. Would that four hundred thousand go to five hundred, six hundred? I'm just, this, you're asking us to approve a milage and we're responsible to the, respond to our citizens, these are reasonable questions that I'm trying to get. So if the revenue that this milage might bring is going to double the salaries, I'm concerned about that.
But it doesn't double it. So the projected total per salaries with this milage, we're looking at about six hundred million.
It's about a sixty-four percent increase currently. I don't know if you've already done that math.
And that's on the high end. I mean, we've been up to higher than we're already stretched as of this. It's the same story for everybody, but the amount of stuff that we provide, programming and educational field trips, we look at that, that we provide for this, for all county residents and for all districts, it's a lot.
Currently, do you charge for people to come in? Here you said, St. Clair County residents will get free admission. Do they currently charge for it?
We currently are free admission due to our free admission initiative, which is a partnership with the city of Port Huron and the CDC. We do, we don't print and receive admission.
Okay, because you got it here in your, hang on, I'm just going through it, because you got free admission, but you already had free admission. What about school trips, field trips?
Those are current and we pay.
I think the free admission, if I'm not mistaken, the city of Port Huron had some ARPA funds that they gave to the museum so then they could go to free admission. So it was kind of like a one-hit Johnny type of deal, and it's, yeah.
Yeah, it is, it is not a promised, uh, free admission program. It's just we're, we're able to authorize it currently.
And just to get this down, I'm going to ask two questions, because Liz Masters here, the supervisor from Wales, what exactly would Wales Historical Society potentially?
Yeah, so the Wales Historical Society has an active presence on Facebook. They are, you know, I'm not, I don't know much more about them other than, than their presence.
What about Memphis, city Memphis? Because that's mostly in McComb County, but it's still, you know, half of it's in there.
Yeah, yeah, they're included on here as well. And they also have, whether it comes through the city or their, like, Facebook, they have a designated group of passionate people that are trying to preserve their history.
So I got no.
Any other questions from commissioners?
I just want one comment because I, we mentioned this when I, you know, I have misgivings about it because of it being centralized in Port Huron. And it's more money from outside of the community coming, from my communities going into the city of Port Huron. And there's no guarantee it comes back. There, you have a grant pro, no, well, you have a grant program, and I've known how grants sometimes get awarded and nine out of ten grants get rejected.
So in our funding proposal, it is that everybody would get something for whatever project it's based, that has historical or cultural entity requests. That being said, another piece to this, aside to this, that the Port Huron Museum would do a review of it, and we would become the St. Clair County Regional Museum. We wanted to be able to represent and tie all of the historical societies together under, under one, one of them.
I had one last question on that point, then. Are you suggesting that of all the people you've listed in your proposal here, that they all want you to, they all want to be part of your organization? Have you?
It's, it's more of a support. At the moment, we're not.
That's your, that's your vision, but if we were to contact the twenty-seven or fifty or whatever it is organizations here, they wouldn't, they wouldn't necessarily say they'd like to be part of a regional organization, correct?
We haven't talked to all of them yet?
Have you talked, have you talked to any of them yet?
I have.
How many?
I have talked, I mean, I have communicated this plan to.
So you send emails out, that's a communication. I mean, right? I mean, those, okay, who, you said you talked to them, okay, you communicated with them, okay? What's the, what's the gist? I'm just trying to get a sense of if all these people here, you're suggesting maybe they would like to be part of a regional thing. Is that what you're saying?
I would.
Is that what you're representing?
I believe that, that historical societies and the local history groups are, would be interested in supporting the, this basic proposal.
You believe that, but.
Due to the mil, or due to the funding.
I'm not trying to be, be mean, but if you believe that, but I'm trying to find out is what do these people want? I mean, that's.
And I also sit on the parks or on the Marine City Pride and Heritage Museum as a purser, and I have mentioned, the board there, they've also shown interest in infrastructure needs. So everyone we've spoken to said, yes, we would be interested in.
So, so your representation of this board is that of all the people you've listed, the majority would say, yes, we want to be part of a regional organization officially? Not just thrown in just by not hanging up on you or not showing, but I'm talking, I'm trying to find out who's interested in it, because it gets my attention. If you tell me that of all these organizations, they're wonderful organizations, all Howard Working Volunteers, if all these people band together and came before this board and said, hey, we want to do this, you'd have, I'd have, I'd have more interest in it.
I think the aspect that the hang with here is that they would be interested in receiving the funding.
Subject to your discretion.
Subject to a committee's.
Subject to the discretion of your board.
To a board, yes.
Your board. The, the, the community hot, community historical board or whatever it's going to be, there's going to be a board, right?
Yeah, that will specifically.
Okay, thank you, I got it.
One that I did talk about, that I have had communication with, with St. Clair Historical Museum and Research Center, and actually, we've developed a plan further due to that conversation, and they are very interested in this being an opportunity.
But I think these groups need to be under the umbrella before we ask for the money. I think they need to be part of the decision-making, part of the committee to, that doles out the dollars instead of a group out of Port Huron deciding where the money is spent.
We're open to exhibit, uh, publishing this.
Any other questions?
I have questions, I just want to, if there's four, there were. I have questions, I just want to, if there's four that we're looking at, two of them I definitely support. We put this on the ballot and we have so many tax millage proposals. And then people go on the ballot and says, I'm tired of paying taxes. It might have a negative effect on the ones that we do actually want. And not say that we don't want this, but, uh, I'm concerned that, uh, like with Park and Rec when Mark Ruchow was here, trying to get a business plan and what it would cost to maintain our parks, that was pretty tough. And I think, Dennis, you're doing a great job. I appreciate what's going on. And the biggest park, of course, is in Goodell's, uh, Wales Township, so that is in my district, and they do an awful lot out there. I'm concerned that one fails and if the park fails, uh, I'm happy with the current one, if it was just a renewal. Not inclusive, uh, supportive of a full mill, but these other ones are very important also. And I don't want residents to go on the ballot, you know, I'm taxed enough. Because with the inflation the way it is and a lot of people can't afford things. Look at the gas prices, uh, in Richmond today, three dollars and sixty-nine cents a gallon in Richmond. I know it's a little less this way, three thirty-five, but, uh...
But another reason to support our local tourism and things for us to do locally as a taxpayer. And I appreciate that. I volunteer for this, I've done it countless times and I'm very supportive of this. Because I see what they're doing. And I see these people that are working on their staff are very, the hours that they put in. And again, it's not, not preaching to the choir, but it's...
I was here when you got started. I was in seventh grade at Howard D. Cross, so sixty-eight, that's when my dad was in Vietnam. That's all I got. I just want to get this on the ballot.
What's the current makeup of your board? Is there county representation on, on your board currently?
We do have, um, we do have a few people outside of Port Huron. I might just want to, uh, uh, play. From the regional aspect, that would be a goal to, um, you know, to broaden our, our voice.
All right. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. Motion doesn't pass. Moving on to, um, item eight, other human service matters. Anything for the board tonight? Seeing none, information only.
Motion to receive and file?
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item ten?
Motion to receive and file?
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eleven?
Motion to adjourn?
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Calling the Judiciary, Judiciary Public Safety Committee to order a roll call, please.
Commissioner Samasco?
Present.
Commissioner Baldwin? Commissioner Beaton?
Present.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Torello?
Present.
Commissioner Rushing?
Still here.
Commissioner Vanabosh?
Here.
Can you get a motion for the agenda?
Make a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
Support.
Any questions on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to citizens to be heard. Vicki Blackburn?
Hi, good evening. I'm here at the request of our president for N double ACP branch three one five zero to also represent the redress committee of our branch. And I'm actually on the education committee. What I want to say is, uh, thank you. We had a redress, um, well, a variety of redress issues regarding the jail. Um, I want to support our redress committee and say that they are required by the N double ACP bylaws to follow up on every single report that they get. And they demand documentation, fact checking, all of that. We're very responsible about that. And so tonight, I want to thank, um, a number of people for collaborating regarding the heat in the jail and the other issues that redress had been, um, presented with. I want to thank Sheriff King and his staff. Um, they facilitated us going through the jail, the, um, redress chair and myself. And, um, we were pleased to see that at this time, we didn't see credibility for the things that were on our list. And for that, I'm grateful, because that means that from what we could see, the inmates are safe and that, um, I felt confident that the sheriff, um, is standing in his word. He said of any citizens in the community or if our redress committee has any issues regarding the jail, that he is on call to respond to those questions. Aside from the education committee, I'm all about, um, social justice, all about fact finding and all about the process. So I'd like to quickly thank for collaborating Sheriff Matt King and your staff. I'd like to thank the Board of Commissioners for helping to facilitate the walkthrough. I'd like to thank our redress committee for caring about the issue. And I'd like to thank our county administrator, who was very patient with calls as well as correspondence. Now I think we have a better, um, process to go through on things that might come up in the future. Um, we all know, every single one of us knows that the HVAC is a sys, is a, um, issue still. And, um, there are people that are going to care about the inmates being warm and there are going to be people that that's not a top priority. However, my vote on it would be whether or not you care about the social justice part. Um, there's a litigation part, if anything goes wrong and where it's frigid in there. And the heat wasn't issued last year as well as this year. So I know that you're working on that. Just want to say, let's celebrate the victories, let's celebrate good news, let's celebrate the fact that we can come across the aisle and be working together for positive things. Thank you.
Helen Hermes?
The National Sheriff's Association held their winter conference in Washington DC, February the third through the sixth. FBI Director Chris Ray spoke at the conference regarding national security priorities. In the Senate and House committee hearings, he warned, one, threat, terror threats are at a level that is unprecedented compared to the time leading up to nine eleven and since October sixth, twenty-three attack on Israel. Two, US infrastructures such as water treatment plants, electrical grids, oil and gas lines, transportation systems are prime targets for Chinese hackers to cause havoc in our country. Three, there has been far too little public focus on cyber threat that affects every single American. Four, FBI cyber and intelligence and analysts say China's hacking force outnumbers the US at least fifty to one. Because of ominous warnings from FBI Director Ray, Butler County Sheriff Richard Jones is changing how his agency arms and trains deputies. Sir, uh, Sheriff Jones is convinced from these warnings, a terror attack is imminent in the US. Sheriff Jones stated hacking attacks are underway in his county and have been for years. In late two, twenty twenty, Russian hackers got into Butler County computer system. It put down the automated computer dispatch system and for approximately ten days, dispatchers had to do their job with pen and paper. China tries to hack Butler, Butler County computer system five times a day. Iran and Russia are there three times a day. Sheriff Jones has ordered AR-15 rifles along with ammunition and clips. The training for staff and civilians is now being changed. Hazmat equipment ordered and plans to expand team. Also expansion of the citizen on patrol program. Sign up, signs up for public training will open May seventeen and eighteen. He's a fast worker. Hacking is constant in all of the United States. The question is not if, but when will disaster strike? What is our sheriff and county commissioners doing to prepare St. Clair County for the when? Where does St. Clark County, oops, where does St. Clair County stand on preparedness? Respectfully, Helen Hermes. I want to go back to the book for a moment.
You need to wrap it up, Helen, sorry.
Pardon?
Your three minutes is up.
Can I just say one thing about TikTok?
About ten seconds.
In the book here, it tells people, uh, now comes the war, prepare food and warm clothes. TikTok algorithm, which determines what people see, make sure that those videos are popping up on the screens of young children.
Helen, I got to cut you off. Got to cut you off, I'm sorry.
I know, it was just trying to finish it out, to let people know how dangerous TikTok is in our country. It should not be allowed.
Helen, you got to stop, please. Don't want to have her arrested. Everybody gets treated the same. Thank you.
Any updates from commissioners? Um, I've got a couple. We're, right now, we're still working on trying to get some of the preliminaries done on the encryption for the law enforcement. I think we're a little ways out yet. We've started getting some of the police departments and the, making sure the radios are up to date for the encryption, but we're not ready yet at all for actual encryption, so. And, uh, the, the police will be the first of the disciplines done. And, uh, hate to say it, they're the kind of guinea pigs to see how the system will react to the encryption. Right now, there's been a couple, uh, issues with, on the fireside, uh, areas that could cause some issues, uh, with data, security-wise with the encryption, so right now our fire paging is kind of, has actually left a hole in our security, so we can't, uh, fireside can't encrypt right now either, anyway, so.
At a point, I had a call from the assistant fire chief in Kenoke, and it was about the radio issue. And what I, impression I got from him was they wanted to get their radios in, encryption can come when it comes, but they, I referred them to the ARPA money that went to the district, so they may handle it that way, but it, I don't, I don't, it's hard for you to understand that police want this and this one wants that and the other ones that can't get this. It just seems like we can't get people on the same page with it, and it's unfortunate, but...
Well, each department is standalone and they're at different points. I've got, for instance, Marine City's been buying radios, they buy three to four a year and update and get rid of the older ones that can't be encrypted, so his ask is going to be for two radios. Uh, the sheriff's department at one time, they kind of, it got away from them and we had to buy a lot of radios because they had a pretty older...
We took care of that with ARPA money as a capital expenditure, so that's the kind of the idea for the little townships I was looking at, so.
Anyone else on updates? Hearing none, moving on. We have no conceptual initiatives, no old business, so moving on to new business. Airmark Food Contract Intervention and Detention Center.
Motion sent at full board?
Any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Airmark Commissary Contract for the Intervention and Detention Center.
Make a motion to move that to full board?
Support.
Any questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Resolution twenty, twenty-four oh four placing proposed renewal of Drug Task Force Millage on the ballot.
Motion. Support.
Any questions on that? I know Matt would love to get up and address it.
I would like to hear from our sheriff on that, just because we've heard from our park director, we've heard from the other folks. I, I'd like to hear, I think it'd be important for the record to have some information on why he feels that's important and perhaps some of the things they've done with the millage money to date.
Good evening, everyone. Um, as the county commissioner spoke, I am here to talk about the Drug Task Force Millage. Drug Task Force Millage has been around for, I think, over forty years. Uh, it funds the nineteen man and women, uh, department that runs just, just to work against the sales and movement of drugs. So the millage is written in a way that, um, bounds the funds to be spent on enforcement and education of drug sales and trafficking. Uh, so basically, our Drug Task Force is, is a nineteen-person department. It also funds a prosecutor and a secretary at the prosecutor's office. These group of men and women work, uh, just on investigations of narcotic sales and trafficking. They work in an office outside of the sheriff's office because they're in an undercover capacity. And the funds that are raised by this millage that is overwhelmingly supported, uh, every four years, goes to pay for the wages, the equipment and other funds that it takes to work in an undercover capacity. The work they do always bleeds over to other crimes. We know that drug crimes bleed over into other crimes. I always say, in, in real straight talk, nobody puts a gun in somebody's face and demands money for rent money. They do it because they're addicted to drugs. So the impact that these men and women make on our community, it's difficult to even, um, measure. They do anywhere from seventy to a hundred and ten drug raids a year. That doesn't count usually around forty to eighty traffic stops that would, uh, be the culmination of a drug investigation. They work tirelessly, they work undercover, and they're called upon to do some very, very important work. And again, if, oftentimes, if there's a shooting, Drug Task Force is called because of our network of information gathered. Uh, we can find out information as to who were the players that, that acted in maybe a shooting or robberies. Um, they don't necessarily spend their time away from drug investigations to go investigate these, but they have a network of performance and information out there that is vital to St. Clair County and the, uh, safety of St. Clair County. We're in a unique position where we are fifty miles north of Detroit or east, depends on, you know, who you talk to. Um, and about fifty or sixty miles from Flint, we have one of the busiest international crossings in America with the Blue Outer Bridges. And of course, we also have the crossing down in, um, the south end of the, um, county. There is a funnel of drugs that move up through Mexico, Texas, sometimes it spins over to Nevada, but it makes its way usually through Chicago then Detroit, and it's literally a vein. If you were to, if you were to go to DEA's, uh, mapping of how drugs move and then right up the freeways, either up ninety-four to us or, uh, up to Flint and across to us. The drugs make their way into our communities, but also over our border. Most drugs that take it into Canada come through America and a lot of it goes through our borders. We work with Border Patrol and other federal agents to, uh, make sure we refer those investigations. We have a deputy on HSI's, um, team through the Drug Task Force, and we chase the drug dealers that come up into our county back into their, uh, originating area and oftentimes to drug raids outside the county like Detroit, Flint, uh, and other areas. So the work they do is very important. The support we've gotten through the years of this millage is, is, um, untested. We always get a lot of support from the community, and of that, I always like to say thank you. Uh, because without these millage dollars, that team would not exist. Those officers would have to go back to different positions. Uh, we fund two officers from Port Huron Police Department, one from Marisal Police Department, one from Clay Township Police Department. The rest are deputies, a couple of sergeants and lieutenant. And then we have partners that work with us that we don't fund from, um, Customs and Border Patrol. So with that, that's, that's a gist of what they do, uh, in a very quick nutshell. I could have a PowerPoint up here, uh, for an hour and put everybody to sleep, but, uh, we're asking for the Drug Task Force Millage to be put back on the ballot as it is every four years. Uh, it's been supported very well. I think the impact that the Drug Task Force has on our community, keeping us from becoming a community that has, uh, opened drug deals and, and... deals, uh, and, and large amounts of dangerous people coming through our county, uh, it keeps our county safe, it really does. We have consistent, um, out-of-town drug dealers, as we call them, from different communities, come here, and when we raid them, oftentimes within several days, they're blown away about how active and how quick we get to them compared to when they go to other communities. Uh, so it's very important for the Drug Task Force to stay active, stay intact, uh, and help to keep our community safe, and keep us from being a destination for drugs and drug dealers.
Any questions for the sheriff? Thanks, Matt.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions on the top? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Addendum to the agreement between Carpal Solutions and St. Clair County for software production products for the prosecuting attorney.
Motion sent at full board.
Support.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Intervention and Detention Center Guardian RFID.
Make a motion to Senate at full board.
Support.
Any questions on that one? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to Commissioner, District, ARPA, Project, Property Recording, Notification Software, Harris Recordings Solutions, Registered Deeds.
Motion, motion.
Support.
Any questions on that one? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Professional Liability Insurance for the Public Defender's Staff Attorneys.
Motion sent at full board.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Court Management System.
Make a motion to Senate at full board.
Support.
Any questions on this one? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Any other judiciary public safety matters? Hearing, moving on to, can I get a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed and adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.